To say thanks for everybody that's come, uh, showed up tonight. It's a pleasure having you all here and probably the safest place to be in Kingman right now.[48.11][48.12](laughing) Anyway, I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me do a roll call real quick.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
That's okay.
Roll call.
Chairperson Ober.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
I'm here. He assumed.
Commissioner Jocelyn is excused. Commissioner Case.
Here.
Commissioner Hollings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item, item number one, consideration of minutes for approval. Consideration for the July 2023 regular meeting minutes as written or with any noted corrections?
I make a motion, we approve.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address, those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Anyone in the public, any of your citizens want to come up and address the commission? No? Okay. Well, tonight, we're gonna move, uh, number five, reports, and, uh, we have some awards to give tonight. We're gonna move those up and get those out of the way now, so if anybody wants to go home, they can. And I know a lot of busy people in this room right now. So anyway, uh, first thing we'd like to do is, we have what's called a community recognition award. Um, and I always like to read the, the application, what, how the application reads. So when they receive their award, they know how it was put in, and I'd like to do that now. The City of Kingman and the Clean City Commission recognize the need and desirability of a litter-free and aesthetically pleasing community. This program has been established to reward community and civic organizations as well as private businesses and citizens for their outstanding efforts in keeping Kingman clean. I'd like to have Jim Carey and his team come up. They're with ALO, and we monitor ALO and, and what they've been doing. And, uh, it seems like every time they leave an area, it actually looks better than it did before they got there. And we sure do appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.[244.94][244.95](applause)
Do you want your whole, do you want all your commissioners to come down for you?
Uh, we were, yeah.
Or just a little?
Just two.
And the, the award actually reads for their outstanding efforts to improve the cleanliness and appearance of the projects throughout the City of Kingman. Jim, we appreciate it.
Can I get you guys to come this way?
Tuck it in here. I'm down here a little. I'm gonna stand up here.[290.06][290.07](laughing)
All right. Can I have you, Mr. Holls, come over to this side for me? You can go back up.
Okay.
We're just right in front of it. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.[304.06][304.07](applause) Jeremy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our second awards recipient will be Ashley Ungaro with Canyon State Enterprises. And she didn't know it, but I invited, uh, her boss here. Is he here? He didn't make it yet. He was trying to. Ashley, why don't you come on up?
All right.[343.22][343.23](applause)
And Ashley's award reads for their outstanding achievements in construction and job site cleanliness. And they do a really nice job getting jobs.
Scoot in a little bit for me? Perfect. Thank you.
All right.[378.74][378.75](applause)
Would you consider to have kids with their mom?
Oh, yeah.
I think that would be great.
Everybody?
Anyway, I guess Joe must've got tied up, but he was doing his best to come. I don't know if he knew he was coming or not, but yeah. Okay, we have a lot of, um, important people here tonight. I don't know where we want to start. Rob, do you want to, uh, I, I could, I could introduce, I guess, a lot of people. Uh, Mayor Watkins, everybody knows he's here. Council Jamie, she's here. Our new interim city manager, Grady Miller. And of course, Annie's here, Annie Meredith, our city clerk. Chief Rusty Cooper at the back. Uh, Captain Brian Zach. And Mr. Lieutenant Jim Bryce. Uh, Fire Chief Jack Jaeger. Oscar Lopez, he's still here, correct, Oscar?
Mm-hmm. (laughing)
And I think, of course, Eddie and Rob. Rob's our Public Works Director. Uh, anyone else I'm missing? Oh, and Mr. Cooper, our city attorney, Mr. Cooper's here. And I'll leave it to Rob for right now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you wanted to continue, uh, go back to item number 3A, the event calendar, or if you wanted to proceed under the, uh, the reports.
I'd like to proceed under the reports. Um, that way, if anybody wants to go home for the evening, they can. They don't have to sit for a full meeting.
Well, Chairman, members of the commission, the commission had requested to, uh, to ask some representatives from the Police Department and Fire and Community Development here tonight, um, to kind of go over, um, some of the compliance issues citywide. And, and so with that, we do have a roomful of dignitaries, and I don't know if we, how we want to break it out. But, uh, since the Police Department is listed first, I guess we could start with Chief Cooper.
Thanks, Rob. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you. Uh, I will say this, it's been in the last, I've been the chief for just over three years. And in the three years, uh, our Neighborhood Services section has been one of our priorities to improve, to work upon. We rebranded it, uh, to be more appropriate with the duties that they perform. And, uh, I know, at the same time, your commission has been looking to upgrade or renew involvements. And I think this is a perfect time and opportunity as we, as I'm talking to you, that we, my goal is hopefully just to, I don't know if it's coordinate, uh, but it, just to share with you what we've been doing and what we're doing. And my commitment also from this day forward is that somebody from my department that's in our Neighborhood Services Division will be present at your, at your commission meetings, just as a, as a liaison similar to Counsel Staley. So, and I'd shared that with her several weeks ago as well, and it's something that should be, should, should be, have been done. And we are doing that beginning today, I suppose. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, also, some questions came to us, came to me directly, uh, a week ago, and I appreciate those. So I, I think I just want to maybe speak to those a little bit in general terms. And then at some point, if there's gonna be questions, it might be best, my guess is, is after, uh, Community Development and the Fire Department spoke, and then that might be a good time for specific questions. But please interrupt me or stop me. I will say this, that with our current code enforcement staff, my, okay, I need to clarify. Neighborhood Services, right? My Neighborhood Services contingency is, is four officers. There are civilians, but there's four of them. And they're responsible for the Kingman Municipal Code, uh, and also animal control, which falls under that. And animal control takes up a good portion, I would say a majority of their time, takes up animal control. And then the rest, the remainder is towards, uh, the other codes that you guys, that we're gonna be talking about tonight as well. And then there's other things that are zoning ordinances that are handled under Development Services. And, uh, and they'll, they'll be speaking to those a little bit later, so. So I'll just go through the questions, is that okay, uh, Mr. Chair? So one of the questions from Commissioner Case, uh, that I felt was us in October, the Metcalf Park inmates were being used, and is that something that we can do? I do know generally as a city, we do do that. Uh, it stopped during pandemic, and it hasn't come back to full force. But they are doing it slowly. And it's something Rob could speak to a little bit more, because the Public Works was using it a lot. And we were also using it for the Police Department, uh, for weeds and trimming and things like that. But it's something that's being slowly put back into place based on the availability of the correction staff out of GIO. Uh, another question was regards to laws that prevent authorities to remove or charge vagrants and panhandlers from public property. That the law prevents us from just simply removing people, um, because they have a right to, it's private property. So obviously, we can't just go on private property, remove it. But the question involved, Mr. Commissioner Case, I believe, was due to littering, uh, was a question. And there's always trash that's left behind, and I would say, yes, yes, it is. And, and I'm gonna make a, a general statement that applies to a lot of what we're doing here. A lot of priorities of service, and I'll say that for me. For me, uh, littering is a crime. If somebody's sitting there and all their debris is around them, it's not a crime. It's not littering. But as soon as they leave and go somewhere else and leave all their trash behind, it does become a crime. But the reality and how my officers are directed to handle those things, it's a priority of our response and our service. To do a criminal case, it's gathering, it's gathering that as evidence, photographs, determining that it belonged to a specific person or a suspect in this case. And then tracking the person down for a misdemeanor crime. And far as me allocating priorities and services, that's not gonna be high on my priority list. Also, a lot of what I'm, we're all speaking to, a lot of what we're all concerned with as a goal, beautification of the city, uh, not encouraging vagrancy and trash and, and soliciting and panhandlers. I will tell you this at the front of it, it's not a police issue. We respond to the symptom, but it's not a police issue. It's definitely a community issue. There's also property owners, business owners and managers. They have the biggest responsibility here of providing security to their properties and providing security to their business and their grounds and also to their employees. But oftentimes, the police get called when someone's being aggressive, and we, we handle those things and we take care of those things. So I'm just throwing that out there, just something we need to keep in mind. Because there's oftentimes, we'll respond to a call, and they want somebody trespassed. This alludes to a question a little bit. I think Commissioner Ober mentions, asks about trespassing. Oftentimes, businesses do not want to pursue prosecution. They just want the person moved along. So that falls into prioritization of resources for me as well, as far as how aggressive that my officers are gonna be. Because I can say, I know this person was trespassed last week. We may have a letter that says they want it, but that oftentimes doesn't happen. Or the manager's not the same person, or the owner, or the, whoever isn't the same person to sign the letter. So that's why that becomes a challenge for us to enforce at, at times. Uh, there was another question. Uh, the median landscaped at the exit entrance to Ross by Petco, wonderful. I will say that was, I believe, as a result of a discussion that my team had had with the property owners. It was brought up, it's been brought up several times about, uh, there was a thing called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's about putting cactus underneath your daughter's bedroom window, right? It, I'm waiting, it should be a little funnier than that. Uh, keep people from crawling in and out of the window, keep the burglars from crawling in and out of the window. Same thing with that, those, that's a perfect example, uh, to make it less convenient for vagrants and panhandlers to stand there. If you've seen, I've seen, there's been one or two that have tried real hard to try to make it, and it doesn't work real well. And they don't last very long, which I think is, is the idea. And that's the responsibility of the, whoever owns that property. Same thing happened in front of Bashes. It's made it a little less convenient for vehicles to be parked right there. Uh, there's things like that. We're also, uh, in contact regularly with ADOT. There's our ADOT Right-Away that falls along that area, along Andy Devine Avenue in Bashes. And that's where ADOT owns that property, and they have to be the one to be a victim in regards to trespassing in the evening. But those are things that we communicate with fairly regular. We are also working on signs. Uh, I don't know where that's at, perhaps, uh, Rob can discuss that. But there's some signs in other communities where we're giving people other options that don't feel obligated to give money to vagrants. That there's other things that you can contribute your funds to to help support, and that's something that I support fully. And ultimately, everything that I tell my officers to do, it's not about being mean or angry or violating the rights of any of these people, but we sure don't need, we sure shouldn't make it convenient for them to continue on, because people are living within our municipality, and they have an expectation of safety. And that's what I'm committed to sharing, but still not, uh, being disrespectful to people. But it can be inconvenient sometimes. And it is our job at times to be the, the heavy, and, uh, we're fully prepared to take that on. There was a question from Vice Chair Carpenter, uh, in regards to Walmart getting their situation cleaned up. And this was similar, about being more aggressive and getting the panhandlers out of their business. And I would say, yes. Our experience with businesses is they hesitate to tell somebody to leave their property, because then nobody likes to feel that way. Nobody likes to tell somebody, you need to move. And oftentimes, that's why when they call the police, they just want us to encourage that person to leave. And we do that a lot. Uh, I, I don't know if I'd put a number, how many hours it is, but we spend a good portion of our time is just kind of moving people along. Because ultimately, putting them in jail's not the answer. And I would say this, that that's not a real deterrent also. Uh, you may think that it is, but it's not a deterrent. Not, most of them don't necessarily want to be in there, but they don't care. Most don't care. And, uh, because they, they'll just get out, and they let it go to warrant, and that nobody's gonna, you know, transfer them back to Kingman from another community. So that's not the answer. Again, it's not a police issue, it's not a jail issue, it's a city, community issue, everybody. Business owners, private property, as well as the city in responding to these things. Uh, Chairman Ober, you had a question in regards to if anybody has talked to us specifically and asked us to ignore or relax codes or ordinances, and I would say, never. If there's ever been any discussion of relaxing an ordinance, it would have been done in an open meeting, at a council meeting. And I would say, there's probably discussion of that in regards to trailers, RVs. Those are kind of the topics there. But nothing's been told to me, it's always been opposite of why, what can we do to speed this process up? Because the process is bogged down, I don't say bogged, but it's bogged down with procedures and times that have to be met to satisfy, uh, codes and what's built into the code and requirements, so. So nobody has ever, have ever said anything to that, to me or my team. Uh, another question, uh, in regards to, I know Chairman Ober, you'd spent some significant amount of time in obtaining signed letters of trespass from businesses several years ago, and we still, we have those. But the problem with taking enforcement action, I alluded to it a few minutes ago, is oftentimes, they don't want, they, the business doesn't want to follow through. They want us to do the work, sure, they want, don't want the phone call, they don't want to have to be bothered with the call, they want to be a little more efficient. But that doesn't work for us in regards to arresting somebody or developing a criminal case, a criminal prosecution. There's a thing we call to reasonable suspicion gets us there, gets us ability to talk to somebody, but then we have to develop probable cause. And one of the first levels of probable cause is, is identifying a victim. And as that victim, what would you like, would you like them arrested? And most of the time, business owners and managers, they say no, because they don't want to be mean. They don't want to have to go to court in six months. There's lots of reasons that I understand and make sense to me, so we'll shoo the people along. And again, it's not, that's not the solution. It's, there's more involved here. Uh, another question. If they're asking for money at the entrances, I'm sorry, I'm reading the question now. Uh, you'd provided some possible statutes, uh, that might be a violation of, um, walking on a sidewalk or blocking a sidewalk. And we did confirm this today, and it's something that we've been aware of, that currently, state law, there's no specific Kingman Municipal Code that talks about a blocking a sidewalk other than a vehicle. Your vehicle cannot block a sidewalk. But as far as a person being in a sidewalk, uh, there's nothing that prohibits that specifically. There is the aggressive panhandler statute that gives us some teeth, that if somebody is blocking a sidewalk and they're holding a sign, then yes, we can. Okay? So that we can do. Or there's some other things that they do. If someone says no, and they continue to ask, that's aggressive panhandling. But specific to blocking the sidewalk, uh, that would give us something to take care of. And I will, I don't know how many cases we've charged in that, but I know that we have handled those before.
Do you have that, uh, aggressive, uh, code with you?
I do, it's thirteen dash twenty-nine fourteen.
Thank you.
Subsection D.
Thank you.
Um, again, and so we've also, I'm, that, those are the questions specifically that I was given that apply to me, at least how I saw it. So I know there'll be a few more of us coming and talking to you. Any questions?
One quick question over by Bash, is that sidewalk, uh, that's ADOT property. Is the sidewalk considered ADOT property also? I mean, whose jurisdiction is that sidewalk?
So any law specific to a sidewalk would be, we would be able to enforce it, because it's an improved roadway.
Okay.
Right? The one specific about blocking a thoroughfare is specific to roadways. And the sidewalk isn't considered part of the roadway. So as soon as a, a panhandler steps into the road, it's a violation of Title thirteen. It's also a violation of Title twenty-eight. Title twenty-eight is traffic laws, Title thirteen is criminal law. But just standing again, I wanted to clarify the sidewalk issue, because I see them as well. So I see that occurring. And some of it is, it's a, again, it's a measure of priority of service. It's important, and we discuss it every time we have a leadership team meeting, once a week. It's a topic of discussion for me, and it's about parking in red zones in Lewis Kingman Park. It's been something that drives me crazy too, because they're parking clearly in the red zones, and these are people living out of their vehicles, right in front of a, no parking sign. But then we have a Little League game, and there's ball field that they use in that backside, everybody's parking in there. So there's a little bit of a double standard that I really struggle with, and I struggle with my staff. So we've kind of taken a soft approach to that, especially ones that are obviously living. So is that a, a different sense of enforcement based on someone's situation? Yeah, it is, because I know what the park's designed for, and it's a quality, community, quality of life issue. So, but it, we've taken a soft approach to that. So we try to do that with other things as well. Certainly don't want to violate people's constitutional rights. But I think we can do that and continue to have a mission of doing that without violating their rights, but sure, surely not making it convenient for them to exist camp, right, trash, uh, within the city limits. So that's, that's our commitment with that. Well, I'd like to thank you for answering our questions and being here tonight, Chief Cooper. Um, I kind of expected those answers, but I just wanted to hear them for sure. So to figure out a different plan of attack to help, you know, uh, solve some of these problems, whether we have to get the city involved, the businesses involved and stuff like that, because, you know, I believe it's a big time on your hands to have to go out and, you know, remove these people, talk to them or whatever. But, uh, you know, for our commission, you know, we're looking to clean it up, and every time we see the vagrants, that's usually, you, and I understand what you're saying, as long as they're there, it's not litter. Once they leave, it is, but, so, you know, somebody's leaving it, and it's usually whoever's standing there, so. Well, the, the, to resolve it quickly is that whoever owns the property should clean it. To me, it truly is, that's on them to do, as distasteful as it might be, that's where that push needs to be. And I also know the city has resources available, that we're there to help and contribute and support, because that's, this also happens on city property. And we communicate with Public Works and Eddie's team as well, and we've done it in some big scale things in the last couple of years, and then we try to do it on the little subtler ones as well. So some of the priorities from my Neighborhood Services team, as a result of a year ago, was, you know, shopping carts, you know, abandoned tires, appliances, and a few other things. Meaning, if you see them, stop and put them in your truck, it's why we give you a truck. You know, put them in your truck, and we'll get them back, you know, we'll get it taken care of. So that's always, it's always on the forefront of what we do. Because shopping carts are another thing that pop up and really drives people crazy. Uh, but I will say, the businesses don't want to pursue prosecution, so that makes it a little difficult for us to do. And we're certainly not in a position to collect all the shopping carts and all the person's belongings that are in that shopping cart, don't have the, uh, capacity to do that.
I, I want to publicly thank Walmart for cleaning that mess up behind that wall along Mojave Wash. I, uh, I put that in as a question, I said, I should probably go check it out and see if they've done anything. There were guys cleaning it up as I went down there, and, uh, they said it was really bad. Uh, needles, everything back there, and they tore the trees out and everything.
Trees have never been put in there. We've had that discussion with them as well, and that, that culvert, box culvert at the end of Mojave Wash under airways, a thing that has to be cleaned up regularly. So we're due, and we're to clean out that whole wash again, because as those trees grow, it's convenient for them to hang, hang out in the shade. So let's change the environment, and that, we're due for that to happen, where that whole wash from I-40 to airway.
They gotta paint the wall from the graffiti.[1597.74][1597.75](laughing) Yeah. But yeah, thank you, Walmart.
That's a good idea, that's a good example of the partnership. I'm sure it's because of what you guys are doing and what we're communicating, but it's ultimately on the business to do that. So I agree with you, congratulations. Thank you, Walmart.
Yeah.
One last question. Um, if the commission has maybe a question for patrol officers, would that be, would you like us to direct that to Captain Zach, Lieutenant, uh, Dan Reed?
Yeah, any questions specifically in regards to operational things would be Captain Zach.
Okay.
You can call, contact me as well, but then I'm gonna refer you to Captain Zach.
Thank you.
So, yeah. But if there's an issue, you're, you're community member, you're citizen, so you can make a complaint as well. So there is that.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, Chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Chair, Chair and members of the commission, that the Part C of the reports is, uh, Community Development and Fire Department. And I know, uh, Oscar Lopez is here from the Fire Department, and I think he'd be able to address your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Oscar Lopez, Kingman Fire. I don't have a set of last questions, so you guys can ask any questions, and I'll try to answer the best that I can.
I'd like, I'd just like to say, last six months, we've seen such an improvement with your department and, and moving forward and being aggressive on weed abatement. I mean, we've been here many years, and this last six months, I don't know what you've done, but it's, it's, it's working. And we sure do appreciate that.
Well, it's, one of the big reasons is the assistance of the, of the chief, Chief Jaeger.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Um, he's kind of given me that leeway to make some decisions. And some people like him, some people don't, but we get the job done.
I'm sure your phone's ringing, but yeah, we appreciate it.
All right. It's been a weedy year.
Well, with the, with the wet winters we had, yeah. Yep.
How many times in the last three years have you guys been called, or you've had to take some big equipment out to clear up a weed problem?
So we don't do it, so it depends on the property itself. So if the property is a big vacant property, and the property owner doesn't do anything, then it goes into the court system, and then we hire an abatement company to come out and take care of that, and then their lien is placed on the property, um, until we can recoup that money as a city.
Is that mainly for fire safety or just aesthetics or both?
Aesthetics, fire safety.
Fire safety, I think, would be huge for.
It, it is.
Cleanest and most places.
But usually, when we get the complaints, um, a lot of property owners, you know, don't like the look of the property in their neighborhood, and that's when we receive the complaints. So when we're receiving those complaints, we're also noticing that it is more of a fire hazard than aesthetics. So we try to push it along for the hot fire hazard issue.
I noticed on Andy Devine, just east of the Sheriff's Department, there's a lot there that there that had a lot of sagebrush or Russian weed or something like that. And part of it's cleared off, but it's still a lot from, half of that lot is still towards Napa. Is there, is it because there's a business going in there and they cleared it off or?
So you're talking DPS on Andy?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not sure what is going on there. If, 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 it's all state land. So basically from Harrison all the way to Napa, that's all state land. It belongs to the state of Arizona. We did make contact with them a while back regarding that. Realize when we have major lots like that, we don't want them to do the whole lot because of the dust.
Right.
Hazards that become a nuisance. So usually what we try to do is make sure that they're clearing at least four to five feet from the edge of the sidewalk and usually the perimeter of the property. So that's what we usually do on a lot of our bigger lots, is just clearing the perimeter just so we don't create that dust nuisance, which is a lot more hazardous than the weeds. So I'm not sure what's going on there next to DPS.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne, anything?
Yes, Chairman. What's the alternative when they clear, especially for the smaller lots and they, they need to clear the, the lot? What's the alternative? You either got beer dirt or you got weeds. Do we promote anything that would make a living plants in there and how to keep them alive and stuff like that?
So usually with smaller residential lots, when we contact them, it's easier for them to hire somebody to just come and plow out the whole property. We've had several properties where there were cacti growing on the property and the property was on, owners wanted to know if we wanted the cacti removed. And we said, well, that's not really an issue. If you want to clear around them, we're okay with that. But our major concern is the dry vegetation around the perimeter of the properties.
Thank you.
One good way to keep the dust down, if it gets too dusty, is mulch. A nice thick layer of mulch. And that, that'd be ideal for a lot of properties.
Yeah. But for the cost effectiveness for them, it's easier just to grade it down and just call it as is because that's all we're requiring.
Anything else for Oscar? Oscar, thank you very much for coming. We sure do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to call up Lieutenant Bryce and maybe Sean at the same time if we could. And if anybody has any questions for Neighborhood Services, and I know they work real close together with Sean and there's things we send to Neighborhood Services and then it gets, ends up getting turned over to Sean. I guess I should ask, does anyone have a question for Sean or Lieutenant Bryce? Or do you have anything you want to add to what's already been said?
I got a question. Is roadkill part of the Neighborhood Services when there's roadkill on the, on the pavement?
Roadkill depends on which type of species of animal.
Oh.
Some of it falls under the state, call it game and fish on some of those. So it just depends. One is disposing of an animal that comes into some difficulty. So that's why we try to get the state involved on some roadkill. So more specifically, if it's an animal like a dog or a cat, we'll take those.
Anything for us, Sean, or?
I, I don't have anything.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
You betcha.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Janet, anything on Zoom up there?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We have Mr. Cooper and Mayor Watkins in the audience and we really.
Not on the agenda.
You're not on the agenda. We really appreciate you coming though. We just want to say thank you very much. And our new interim mayor, Brady, we appreciate you. And thank you very much. We're going to move on to old business. And we'll let Rob talk about the event calendar.
Mr., oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So we did participate in the United Way Day of Caring on September 9th. We actually had 21 volunteers, which is our biggest turnout ever. And picked up 16 bags of debris. So we need to work on our per person baggage for, improve those statistics for the next event. But we appreciate the turnout. Vice Chairman, or Vice Chair Carpenter and Commissioner Hollins attended October's First Friday event. And that's about all I had to report. I don't know if anybody has any new events coming up in the next couple of months to, to talk about or not.
I, I don't, but I have a continuation on that day of caring. The next week, we did, I guess the week of caring. So we had two Golden Valley cactus cleaners, myself and, and Mark Schmidke, come in and haul trash for two days. And then our, we had a third guy come back from wherever he went for the first couple of days and, and picked up, so we hauled out like 16, over 16,000 pounds of trash and debris south of Butler and Birdland in addition to the day of caring.
Yeah. And that was a great addition this year. This was the first time that Butler, Birdland area has been included in the day of caring. So that's, that's appreciated. That was, that was a great project out there.
Okay, moving on to property maintenance responsibility. That's been on our agenda for months and months. We've been working on a flyer and the flyer is completed. It's called Property Maintenance Requirements. And it's a bi-fold flyer. I think everybody's had their input on it. And I just want to add on the flyer, we'd really like to see maybe Oscar to get his hands on this and maybe Lieutenant Bryce get their hands on it. We felt that this flyer, if you have to put a notice on somebody's door, you can attach this flyer to the notice, put it right on their door. Maybe something that, I keep wanting to say code enforcement, but anyway, if they could, you know, carry a handful of brochures in their car with them and when they're going after a weed abatement problem or a situation like that, they could actually attach one of these with it. There's a lot of good information in this. And if Lieutenant Bryce hasn't seen it yet or Oscar Lopez, be great to get some over to him and let him take a look at them.
Yes, yes, sir. And I guess I'd just like to acknowledge the assistance of Donna Alderson and City Clerk Annie Meredith on putting that together. But the, the flyer was actually originated, there were different flyers in different divisions. You know, PD and Fire kind of had different information on their web pages. And we tried to bring that all together. And then the commission kind of made the final design choices on that. So I think it turned out really well. And I think it will be a great resource and we'll make sure that it's distributed to everybody, everyone involved in the process.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, moving along to new business, promotional and educational materials. Discussion on possible action regarding the purchase of promotional materials to hand out to the public at the events attended in the Clean City Commission. We've discussed this a couple of times, that whether we have a budget or not, our pamphlets that we pass out at these.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
We skipped an item, I believe. The item number C under old business.
I'm sorry. Clean City Commission vacancies, absolutely. Regarding the two remaining vacancies, I think they're full now. We have Janet Wilson. We'd like to welcome her to the, to the commission. She's on Zoom. And we're still, we're still missing one, correct?
Well, we'll be missing two. This is Mr. Hollins's final, final meeting as a member of the Clean City Commission.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd like to offer the opportunity for any parting remarks from Commissioner Hollins.
Thank you, Rob. I don't have anything prepared, but I do appreciate the city of Kingman allowing me to serve on the commission. It's been an experience. I, I see that we were heading in the right direction here. I would like to have been a little farther along on, on some things, but I think overall we're finally heading in the right direction. And so I appreciate the opportunity to have served on this commission. And looking for good things to follow on and, and especially for the Kingman Helping Hand thing, if, if we get that and you need help hauling stuff, I'm there. So let me know and, and I'll be there. So I'm just glad to have met everybody and worked with you all and the city and Rob and Eddie and everybody. So I, I'm humbled. Thank you.
Well, if, if I could just say, it's, it's been a pleasure serving or working with you. And I'd just like to acknowledge the work that your cactus cleaners group has done and really some monumental achievements as far as cleaning up wildcat dumping out in the desert. So it's appreciated.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, moving along to new business, back to promotional and educational materials. I've been speaking with staff on that and they wanted us to come up with a quarterly budget and put a, put a number on it. And do we still have to make a motion on that, Donna? Okay. We felt like for our brochures and our pamphlets and stuff, a $500 maybe quarterly or biannually budget. And we can, that way when we need more pamphlets, we don't have to wait for a meeting to come along, they can go ahead and get the, get them ordered. So unless any, I'd like to hear some comments on that. If we feel like a $500 quarterly or biannually budget would suffice with what we have right now.
I'd say that's a good start, yeah. And see where it goes, see what we're going to need after the first quarter or two.
I'd like to, I'd like to do it quarterly. I'd like to see a motion for quarterly and if we don't, we don't have to use it all.
Then I'll make a motion that we do that quarterly.
For the dollar amount of?
$500.
I have a motion on the floor for a $500 quarterly promotional and educational material budget.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did Janet say aye?
Janet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, next item on the agenda, announcements from commissioners and members. Anyone have comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment. I'd like to thank all that's been involved in cleaning up the area beside Bash's. That looks really a lot better over there. So I'm not sure who all was involved. I know Rod and Rob and Kealan and possibly Eddie. But I just want to thank everybody. It's a great job and it's really nice seeing everybody starting to work together a little more cohesively. So thank you for that. And that's what I have to say on that.
Great. And I'd like to add Sean to that. We appreciate that, Sean, all your hard work in that. Any other comments?
I guess I do have a comment that we do have some refreshments here to send off Commissioner Hollins after the meeting. Welcome to stay.
Thank you. Everyone's welcome to stay. We appreciate that.
I do want to make a comment about our promotional and educational materials. We were talking about doing, yeah, the educational like refrigerator magnets or something like that, that we got to talk about as well. And that's all, is that all part of under the 500?
Yes. That would fall under that 500.
All right. Thanks for clarifying that. So.
Anyway?
I will be attending the regenerate conference over in Santa Fe, New Mexico at the end of the month about regenerative agriculture and water harvesting and various other subjects and stuff like that. So after I get back, I'll come down and let you know what I, if I learned anything or not.
I want to say again, a pleasure serving with Wayne. It's a blessing, man. And this guy's a get it done kind of guy, for sure. Yeah, you're going to be missed.
Okay, anyone else? Do I have a motion for adjournment? All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.